Good evening, and we'll begin the Planning Commission Passing Task Force meeting for Wednesday, August twentieth. Let's say. The road call. That gentleman Kraken, you're here. Paula Kay.
Here.
Kathy Sutlin.
Here.
Michael Venter.
Here.
Megan Juplis. Not in attendance. David Byers is here, and Dennis Phil Mary Jr.
Here.
Do we have any members from the Housing Task Force?
So we don't have any Housing Task Force business tonight?
Okay, so they're formally excused. Let's see them. All right. Um. With that, we'll quickly review the minutes from the last meeting. I can get a motion for approving minutes. So moved, is second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? One abstained yet. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing for the Ture application for re-subdivision of land, six point six acres into three lines. Representing.
Yeah, good evening, it's Ella representing Amy Ture, who's here this evening. This was a continuation of the public hearing from your last meeting on August sixth. At that time, there were a few outstanding items. I just want to review and show you what's been done. We had actually addressed with the plan sets that you have, which were revised through August fifth. We actually addressed a lot of the concern, but we're waiting on some of the new comments. So we did receive a response back from Jeff Jacobson, that I think three outstanding items in his letter were addressed. You know, there was a Mabel calculation that needed to be confirmed, making sure drainage has been taken into consideration. A question regarding the center line of the roadway, and then an earthwork analysis. So those are all, his new August fourteenth letter have all been addressed. Attorney Willis is here regarding the, if there's any questions on the legal documents. And we've also received crowd approval and comments back from the fire department. I don't really have a lot to present because so much was presented at the last meeting. One thing I note, there was a comment in the record from Dan Carstens, who's a neighbor to the south. And if I could, if I can be allowed into the Zoom, I can show you part of what he was talking about. And show you that it's not a concern. I don't think this is a planning commission concern to begin with, but since they raised it, I just want to make sure we address it. Okay, so big picture, here's the property subject to the subdivision. The Carson property is down in Indian Town. Not sure if it has the Nahantic Trail out there, so what it's, it's in this lower portion here. And then I'll zoom in on, I'll go down to where it's zoomed in a little bit better, so it's easier to see. So this is the bottom of the property, the southern end. Then Dan Carstens property is here, and there's a maintenance easement that is over the subject property, the Ture property, and you can see it's pretty well marked and hashed on the plan, and it's not being impacted. So that was, I think, one of their, one of their questions that I can easily demonstrate on the plan is there's no buildings being proposed there, there's no activity, there's no stormwater, there's no stockpile. It's remaining as it is, subject to the terms of, to that maintenance easement.
What was the purpose of the maintenance agreement, Mr. Cassell?
I, I, I'm not actually sure, but I think it was an encroachment that they just memorialized in an easement instead of litigating.
Okay.
You know, the Carstens have been using the property for years without really knowing where the boundary line was. And it may have led to an adverse possession claim. I'm somewhat winging this, but based upon my experience, that seems to make sense.
Good, thank you.
There were some comments about the easement being like mis-recorded on some of the plans here. I wasn't sure, is it being fixed? Do we take that into consideration at all, or do?
I mean, again, we have, one of the first documents that we have is a survey that shows the location of the easement. So, you know, we rely on the surveyors to.
Yes, like, note number ten on there is talking about how it was like, there was some miscalculation there at some point in the last, wasn't it?
On the survey?
Yeah. It was going number ten. Zoom in, just.
Yeah, it was discovered in the. Additional distance as well, yeah.
I don't think that was brought up by the Carstens. You know it all, that's what I'm sure, like, that's something that is. What we should do with that kind of.
That's nothing for us to handle. That's between parties.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know if it's shown on a map somewhere, but is it, there's a rectangle that's clearly shown on the survey.
Yeah, I wanted to sort of efficiently extend past this property, but it's not, but then probably need to consider that.
Yeah.
That's, I think, the thing, the question I would come for. It's not that I don't know, then I saw the email from Harrison, right?
Yeah. I don't know if there's any other questions, or, you know, if I can address anything further, but I think we had a very substantive discussion at the last meeting, so.
Why don't we introduce the emails that are already forward to me?
You can just mention them.
Yeah, they're already in the record.
They're in the record.
Yeah. Attorney Cassella, have you seen those?
I have, yeah.
Thank you. Did you want to address them in any way?
Well, I addressed Carson, Johnston, there's an email concerning Johnston and, you know, rain in two thousand, I think twenty-three, coming onto their property on Meadowwood, the west. Again, our position is, this site has been fully engineered for tramways, unfortunately. Dealing with the storm in the Howard Banks in North Carolina, that's, that's another question. So he's not here, but as you know, then, you know, this has been engineered, it's passed through wetlands approval, Jeff Jacobson's reviewed it. The additional impervious from the road is being handled by the infiltration strip to the side. So, you know, we don't believe this, from an engineering perspective, will have any impact on the neighbors from the water. There are times when it rains a lot and it puddles, but based upon all the reviews that have been done, this development won't worsen any of that. I should, I should mention, this is a CAM application as well. It's fairly remote from any protected coastal resources like tidal wetlands and Long Island Sound Beach and Dunes and those things, but it's still within the CAM review area. The positive things from a CAM perspective. Number one, we are undertaking a required stormwater mitigation with the water quality infiltration strip that's been designed and engineered. Number two, this property is not in a flood zone. So the DEP and coastal policy encourages development outside of flood zones. So this, this property, all the development where the houses are going to be is outside the flood zone. The floodline is like way on the southwest corner of the property. So from, from a CAM perspective, we believe that all the coastal policies and standards are met for this application. I think that's if there's any work things that came in, but if there's any, like I said, if there's any other specific questions, let me know.
We need to talk about the subdivision waiver.
Yeah, I think Mr. Jacobson sent a letter in on that, but yeah, that is one of the things you have to consider. Along with, you know, the open state space section, your regulations. And whether anyone here from the public wants to speak too, I don't know, depending if does.
Is there anything preventing, I mean, I guess I'm a little concerned, not concerned, but don't really understand the waiver. So what's the waiver for?
The waiver is for certain requirements in the regulations that can't be met. I believe Mr. Jacobson discusses that. If I grab his letter. I think because there's an existing driveway there. Yeah, let me pull the letter out here. Yeah, you'll see it on the third page of his letter. Normally, there's certain radii that have to be addressed. He did not have an objection from an engineering perspective regarding it. And that requires a two-thirds vote, any waiver of the regulations do.
And then we did have a report filed from the fire chief that shouldn't be any issue with.
Correct.
Anyone in the public have any comment?
Yes, sir, if you say your name. Yep, two words, I have a fifty word Nahantic Trail. I sent the letter if, for the last meeting that we made, I was done, I need to put it in. I have no objections to the development, and, you know, I think it should be approved, however, I had asked that consideration to give into a conservation easement along the easterly border. And the concern I have is if you look at the, at the plans, the footprints of the house are very small. So the odds of that being built are solid, and there's no garages. I believe it's like a thirty by twenty-five foot, that show. And then we're the septic system, you know. If anybody's been through the area, they know that the septic system there are all have to be laid. So rating that is shown on the, on the maps does not address any future, it shows a location, but does not address any future elevations or heights. Also, if people look to try to get a basement in, you know, that's going to raise up the, the foundations. I'm not sure it's even going to be possible, but the, the concern I have is that once those septic systems go in and they're raised up probably three feet, two feet, three feet above the existing grade, all that water is going to have to run to the east and to the west. There, on the Nahantic, there is no drainage. We have catch basins that are just some. And if anything starts coming along that, there was a stone wall that goes pretty much up above, you know, along that easterly border. My neighbor, which I believe is fifty-seven, is actually in a hundred-foot flood plain on our property, so it is closer to the property than, than, you know, the council had said. The, so I had asked that a conservation easement be considered along that property line. And they show a a proposed limits of clearing on the maps. And I think that some sort of conservation easement that could be up to that limit, or even a little bit further away, would help disperse any water that's going to be coming off of, you know, off the septic system once they are installed. The other issue I had is like, I'm a building developer and I've created more homeowners associations, I'm embarrassed to remember, but it's been in that. In flood, it wasn't locally inadequate, there was no reserve for maintenance. And I think when you've got a situation like this, that the, you know, that they've got to maintain that drainage system that's going to be on the, I guess would be the westerly side of the road, like the train they call it. That there has to be some allowance for people to maintain that, because that's going to be crucial in taking care of all that water. So I think that, you know, a fifteen-foot, twenty-foot conservation easement running along that easterly border would be beneficial to the people on the Nahantic Trail. And I think it would be also beneficial to the, to the residents that are going to be building there, because it gets to keep it. Believe me, the last thing I want to do is keep that vegetation, because it's just if anybody's going to buy there, it's just overgrown and vines and thickets, and they kind of come over the wall. I spent about two hours this morning trying to get rid of some of the stuff. So I think that that would, would help once the, you know, once the houses are built, because once you approve it, and then it goes to the building department and engineering for review, it's going to change. It's not going to be what you're looking at. So that's, that's my only comment. Again, I, I have no objection to it, but I think that a conservation easement, you know, some would be ten and twenty feet along that stone wall border would be helpful in, you know, containing water well.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Colston, and I live at fifty-two Meadowwood. I'm on the west side. And I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit more to the concerns regarding the fire department that you.
You speak up, I can't hear you. Help closer.
Said I'm Cindy Colston, I live at fifty-two Meadowwood Lane. So I'm on the westerly side of the development. And I heard from the discussion, that some concerns about the fire department or something, I'm not aware of what, what that was in regard to, is on the.
Look, the fire chief just submitted his opinion that the way that the roads are engineered and the turnaround, that there will be no issue with their equipment getting out in there.
Okay.
That was.
And the, and the only other thing that I did want to say is that, like, this has been a long process. I've gone through all the wetland meetings and zoning, and I think that I, I don't have objections to this development being there, but my, my big concern and like others is water. The water is the thing that is a main concern. I just had to put a wet-dry basement system in my home last year. I already had a sun pump. I have a second sun pump. Now we have more homies going in. I understand the home that's going to be built behind me is a five-bedroom home, that's going to be a big septic tank. Groundwater is an issue, so I wish them well with their dream and what they want, but I don't want water coming onto my property and creating more of a problem for myself, and I just want to be have that be noted, that that is my concern.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bert. Anyone on the committee have any questions or comments?
Just a comment, I guess, in response to Mr. Lakaba. And I'll direct us to the attorney. Wasn't there going to be a berm along that western wall to keep the water in and kind of funnel it to the sewer system?
Yeah, only on the north side, because the north, the north side, it actually, our property was a little bit higher than Mr. Costello's property. So that's why we put the berm in on the north side. On the other, on the other areas, the other properties are higher than ours. So it's uphill to the east. But the berm is only up at the north.
Okay, because Mr. Lakaba's right next to the Costello's.
Yeah, again, I know we.
It says Jocelyn.
Yeah, yeah, that's Costello's, yeah. I think that's all his property. I, I, I don't see the spot elevations on here, let me just look.
Yeah, it's, I think, the one you're referring to here is this close-up of the where the driveway splits, it's, uh, sheet four of seven. And I think you're referring to this, they were going to add that that elevation so that the water would go out to the spillway versus towards the the other properties.
Yeah, and I can just respond to Mr. Lakaba's comment, which is if we change the grade in, which again isn't proposed, and direct water onto his property, that's, there's a private right of action for that. We can't, you can't just do that, just change the grade and direct property. One of the benefits of the subdivision, Residence A District requires twenty thousand square foot lots. These lots all well exceed twenty thousand square feet, so there's room to spread out the septic system, so it doesn't have to be as high. To spread out, you know, the, to have rain gardens, which are required and part of the CAM application. So, you know, everything has, everything has been designed so that it won't have an impact on the neighbors.
That they follow all of that.
Well, no, I understand. Yeah.
And if I, if I may comment, I mean, at great length, we talked about the water problem and specifically going to Captain's Lane and coming down around. And I, I thought, going back to inland wetlands, that the problem was a drain not being cleaned, and then pipe of being of adequate diameter going underneath the wall, which is being dug up. But also, I guess, Public Works was involved in terms of if the pipes were able to handle the water going up, and I thought that that was all kind of settled. That that would be improved so that it would not infect, the water wouldn't find its way back to that first property on the west. Right, I, I believe that that was what, that was all work addressing that issue.
That's correct. Yeah, the, the goal is, if, you know, if the wetlands do fill up, they're going to flow to the north.
Right, and that drain is going to be
Correct.
clear, so it can, the town can handle that.
Last point, I think we've spent a lot of time talking about the conservation easement, so we're providing two-point-eight acres of land that's going to be set aside via conservation easement. And I know the applicants do not agree to any further conservations. That's twenty-seven percent of the subdivision land, which exceeds the, you know, the ten percent guidance in the, in the regulations.
Is there any comment on the open space that they provide conservation? I just, I think some of the main concerns I've got is just the free coverage or how to protect that. I know we have proposed limits. But I guess, as opposed to a conservation easement, are there any other ways to limit the amount of tree clearing that can be done?
You had prepared a proposed motion, Chris?
Yes.
Is there anything there that addresses that?
So in the motion, because it's during the last public hearing, it said it was kind of like a typical limits of clearing.
Yeah.
So in the draft motion, I put language saying that the limits of clearing would be identified, you know, on a revision, which the actual, not the typical, and that the clearing would be limited, so not just to go in and clear cut all the lots and put for sale, and then let the individual property owners, if the lots are sold, make those calls as to what would be cleared.
I think that's sort of the concern that, yeah, there's nothing, no coverage easement, nothing, no other way to prevent, like, just go in and clear cut it. This is a pretty, I think it's mostly wooded now, except for the two houses. And so anything that's cut down could change the way the water flows, could change the way, you know, some of the drainage works on here. I know that was all taken into consideration by the engineers, but. Well, in the motion to approve, there is a fair amount of language talking about limiting the amount of clearing. And that would be before the sale of the lots. So I think it's the individual hand that would be handling separately. Or is that, that's a market inspected clause, I mean, that someone from the, the town would go in and I guess agree with the amount of land was being cleared, is how that would work?
They would do a proposed limits clearing on the lot, and that's part of the subdivision conditions modifications, and that's what's proposed.
Even if it's not in the easement, then, I mean, or the hundred-foot off-line review, there's not much we can do for the clearing, but the idea from hearing the comments at the last meeting was just to kind of let each homeowner do that as they come in versus just clearing them all and saying lots per se. Not that the applicant's intending to do that, but.
Well, Mr. Chairman, for, for the record, I have to remind everyone that this is private property. And you're asking a, an owner to encumber not only a conservation easement area point, two point, did you say, two point eight? Which is, again, I would say it's excessively more than ten percent. But this is his, this is his property, and if he wants to cut down trees or clear it for development, because he's going to sell the lot. I, I mean, I think that the, you know, the, the the recommendation should be tempered, knowing that we're setting perhaps a precedent for encumbering people's property in advance in return for this subdivision grant. So I, I have real concerns as to the limits of where we want to do that. I mean, it's one thing to say and agree to a conservation easement, but, but to go further and, you know, and encumber the you know, the marketability of the lot or what they want to do with it in terms of trees, I don't, I didn't think we had gotten to the point where we are actually regulating trees. I hope not. So that's my, that is my concern.
Mr. Cassell, did you want to address the question concerning the maintenance amounts in your proposed documentation?
Yeah. I know that my client has been getting quotes to do some of the work in anticipation of finalizing a budget. So, you know, we're pretty confident that the numbers we've provided are accurate and will work, because it's, it's not a lot of work to occasionally mow that strip and then clean out the covert and follow the road, right? That's what we're talking about. That's, that's what the association will need to do. So we'll, we'll get better quotes when the documents are finalized as part of the legal review process.
Do you know if Mr. Jacobson reviewed your estimates at all?
I don't. The only, his comment was what to start building a reserve or repaving the road.
Right.
Which, and again, we're, we're actually working. It's hard to predict how much a road paving is going to cost in twenty-five years, but.
Never mind twenty-five days, right?
Yeah, we, we, you know, we can, we can start building up a reserve for each homeowner. That's, that's, that's not an onerous thing, so we saw that comment. So, you know, that makes sense to get the association started off on the right foot. So, you know, it's a fifty thousand, over twenty years divided by six lots, it's, it's a couple hundred dollars a year. It's not, it's not a huge, it's not a huge thing, so. We can work that out as part of the legal review process. Which, you know, it'll be required to get these documents approved by council prior to filing my hours and the legal documents.
Anything else? So I just, I just kind of go back to the three thing. I understand the, you know, regulations might not want to encumber private property here, but I was kind of looking at easement, and it's, I think it's very generous, but if you're going to take out the inland-wetland part of it, it's only about, you know, it's like point seven acres here. So if you look at that and see, so subtract the wetlands out of the full property, it's a less than ten percent addition to what the Romans already require. Now protecting wetlands is one of the things that you can do with a conservation easement, so. I don't, you know.
But not limited to.
Yeah, not limited to at all, and, you know, having your tree cover does protect, you know, provide you a clean area of the town, it provides habitat for wildlife, it helps mitigate some of the rainwater runoff concerns we've heard from multiple neighbors. So, that's why I'm just kind of concerned that, you know, we didn't, you know, there's no sort of consideration for extra bumper areas or extra limitations that we could put on here.
So I look at my, it's a relatively small parcel. This is not a two-hundred-acre subdivision where there's all kinds of wooded area. You know, you want to protect some, but a lots of relatively small, and, and that's a constraint, so, you know, as you expand it, you cut into those other pieces, and so.
Yeah, I say, I mean, they're small, but they're also much larger than they could be. Like, someone could propose a much more aggressive subdivision and get a lot more trees out of here, so I think, you know, all right, this is good now, but there's for nothing preventing more in the future, or nothing really guaranteed of this, which has been largely wooded property for quite a long time, and the neighbors are kind of getting used to that. It's going to change.
So what, what are you saying? If they.
I would invite them more in the future.
They could, I mean.
Well, they would have to come back.
And that would be difficult from a septic perspective, especially with the high ground water.
And if they sell the lot. They said, you know, this is a chance to protect and preserve a wooded area in town. And if we don't take the chance now, we may not have a chance, yeah. And one of the things in our plan is to get a closely managed development in these kind of flood prone areas that is near the water, this is near flood areas, this is near some of these communities. So I think closely managing it is appropriate for this commission to do.
But if I can make one comment, if there there was an additional subdivision, you would have an opportunity for additional open space at that point in time.
But only out of the percentage of the property that there's something.
Right, yeah, but the weapons were already encumbered, so you wouldn't be able to double up on those, but then.
Also, I'd like to point out there, it's not a total freebie to put the wetlands into a conservation easement, because really, there's a stepping up in, again, the degree of encumbrance on that property. So I mean, you're not giving it, I mean, credit, you know, you're just counting the the new area, but it counts for something that you're putting that wetlands in.
Yeah, I mean, it's supposed to almost like, more than twenty five percent of the whole property would fall under the conservation easement, which includes the wetlands, which I think is already twenty percent of the property to be in there, so. That would be protected, I think, you know. But it just, but it's just main concerns that I see from, you know, some of the the new batches. Where the water is all gonna go, and then just the trees and the credit, what the effect there is.
Kathy, any questions or comments?
Okay, thank you. So again.
Cindy Poston, I just wanna a- address as far as the tree removal, the the lot that is behind my house right now. That was completely clear of trees. Those trees are gone. The whole thing was wooded area with wildlife. And that, that's gone. All that's gone, and that lot has, when I understand, already been approved, so did it affect the um the con- the um, nature that was behind my home? We had deer walking up the middle of Meadowwood Road when those trees were all taken down. We have fox out walking around in our front yards. So there's already been a number of trees that have been removed from that site, and I'm not sure if there even were or needed to be permits to take those trees down, but they were in, that whole lot is clear. So the the um, area be it their private property and whatever, has already been changed with a lot of tree removal that was back there, and that's that that's just my, what I can just from my, um, living now.
I think the only thing we can address as far as tree clearing is what they're going to be doing and preparation to sell off the lot.
As part of the subdivision.
As part of the subdivision.
Yeah, I mean, you, your open space provision is in five point eight of the regulations. And, you know, that's what discusses, they proposed certain open space. It's up to the commission to decide whether it meets the regulations.
And then once the lot is sold, we have very little jurisdiction over what they do with the trees that are on that lot.
Like any other homeowner.
Right. Okay.
I guess sort of my, yeah, this is our our chance to, if we want to try to protect the tree more.
You have someone in the back, you know, waiting to.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I'm gonna make a couple comments if the count, the, you know, number well, maybe, and first of all, commissions put conservation easements on subdivision all the time. So as far as, you know, contributing on private properties, uh, that's just how it is. I mean, most most open space, you can't use wetlands as your open space when you have to give open space because it's already protected. Uh, my only point of asking for that conservation easement along the eastern property is I'm not worried about the developers, because they're gonna do what they gotta do, and they're gonna sell the lots. But once you sell the lots, what's gonna stop a homeowner from just going in and be clear cutting the lot? And then say, oops, I didn't know. And if there's not something in the records that protects the the buffer that buff, you know, the 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 uh, the limits that you show on the map are meaningless. And I think any studies that were done as far as drainage, they're they're done as of the existing topography. That's gonna change. I mean, the there, I I don't care how long those septic systems are, I've I've been building since I was on the third generation builder. And when you have high water table, in this spring, I was taking out fence posts in my backyard, the water was up one foot to the one foot to the top of the surface, you're gonna have to raise those septic systems up two to three feet, which is drastically gonna change the grading that's shown on these subdivisions, on subdivision maps. And so you're, what you're gonna do, you're gonna depend on your building department and your engineering department to address that.
I I think uh, that we have a health department that deals with the septic system.
They're gonna deal with septic, but not, but the the water drainage, because once your septic systems get raised two or three feet, that water's gonna go somewhere, and it's gonna, like I said, the way those, that lot four, I believe it is, is orientated, the septic system runs north to south. So if you raise that up two or three feet, that water's gonna run to the east and to the west. And so where is that gonna go? And if it starts coming on from the hounded, uh, on the hand, there's there's no way to get rid of it.
Well, that's what that whole discussion was about, they're tearing up that wall to that pipe to.
But that, that, we're above that. What I'm talking about is above that. That's, that's a dispel of problem, was your P buds up to the wetlands? Where you, if you look at your map, you'll see where that septic system is for for lot four, it's well above that. So once that, you know, if you if you come in and you have a septic system now that's this much above the existing grade, where's that water going? And like I said, if we can, you know, if you can just keep some kind of buffer over the stone wall there, along that wall, it at least will help disperse it. Whereas if they, if somebody comes in, they build a house, and all of a sudden that water's just grated to the back, it's gonna all start coming onto the hand. Again, like I said, my neighbor is in a hundred year flood, part of her property is on a hundred year flood line. So that water could possibly go that way. So I like, you know, I I appreciate the commission looking at, you know, talking about the tree limits, but if you don't enforce it, it it's meaningless.
But um, may I ask um, this cross step question from, um, Chris? Um, am I correct in thinking that zoning is going to look at the individual, th- this whole plan and then
So this is
this in on the engineering?
No, this is the the last kind of engine, hearing review, other than, so what'll happen is the subdivision will be approved. Your limits clearing and whatever conservation easement
Okay.
will go through, each lot will come in, the houses on there, as they're said, are schematic. So the houses could be bigger, the leaching could be reconfigured, mounded and so forth. So the, even, you do have a health approval.
In zoning, in zoning? In the zoning.
It it depends on, so if the lot gets sold, the homeowner will come in with a design for their house, so it's not gonna stay with perfectly within these little schematic squares. It could be bigger houses. It could be different configuration, the septic could be moved somewhere as they go through lot by lot. So what'll happen is, the health department will then go through, depending on the design of the septic system, I mean, it could be a mounded system, it could be reconfigured, it may not, like we're just talking about lot four, it may not run north to south. It could be configured totally differently, you know, depending on the design and and what the pro- the new owner wants to do.
But it doesn't necessarily go through zoning, only if it triggers certain.
No, it it has to go through zoning administratively. So what would happen is, the lot would get sold. There's a limit of clearing right now on this plan. But at some point, someone could buy the lot, tear all the trees down that are not in the conservation easement, do a different size or design for the house with a different configuration of the septic system. This is just to demonstrate that you could fit these thirty five by twenty five houses with a septic system. The house could be in an entirely different location. And it could have a mounded septic, it had a different septic, there's a number of designs for it. But at this point, this is just to demonstrate to you that you could put a house in a septic system in there with the adequate reserve. It doesn't talk about the grading or anything like that, that the new owner would propose when they build their house.
Thank you.
If if there is an one additional protection, which is on on your motion as well, there's a hundred foot setback off the wetlands. And I think the motion has a condition that no clearing can be done without a wetlands permit. Um, so a hundred feet to the south of this wetlands brings you to the edge of that septic system. So that area is protected subject to Wetlands Commission review, so if the property owner wanted to do anything in that area, they would have to go to Wetlands Commission meeting and get approval for it, including clearing, grading, et cetera. Which is right, you know, basically right next to Miss Alacaba's property. So again, you know, your, this site is very restricted to begin with. And we're offering an additional conservation easements, two point eight acres, two and a half times what's required, so we're not, you know, we're not agreeing to any, any part of conservation easement.
But the Wetlands Commission could approve something as close as twenty five feet to the wetlands if they wanted to, and and the clearing, so we're not.
Be a process where, where is the water going? Is it being directed onto his property? And that would be part of the the Wetlands review.
Okay, so that's a key point. If they can't clear within a hundred feet of an inland wetland, that would overlap a fifteen foot conservation easement along the La Cava property. No?
It's, it's to the north. So the the hundred foot line is is north of the septic system. So really, the way this map is shown, that you're looking at right now, that's, that can be cleared right to the, to the stone wall, which is the property line. And that's out of the hundred foot review area.
Yeah, south, south of the septic system is on the hundred.
Yeah, right. Right.
So again.
And that's where the concern is, that area there.
You're juggling private property rights, as was stated earlier.
On both sides of the wall.
On both sides of the wall, exactly. You could install a septic system and direct this water onto our property.
I'm not sure if I understood, Mr. McCab, at one point, you mentioned something about the stone wall. Is there any any part of this proposal, it's talking about removing the stone wall? No, okay.
I believe is the property line, so I think it kind of, I don't know if it straddles the Nehantr Trail people and and the the subject.
Uh, people usually keep them up because, was it Goodwalls, my good neighbors, we have the old Robert Frost saying, I think.
But they're impervious to water, though.
So Chris, wetlands permit twenty four fifteen? Does that apply to one or all of these?
So that's for the construction of the road and any activity needed within the hundred foot review.
Oh.
So if a lot gets sold, if someone, the new owner wants to come in and build a house.
And you're saying they can reduce that hundred foot?
It's not a setback, it's a reviewer. So the Wetlands Commission could say
Yeah.
we're gonna put it twenty feet, just like the Wetlands Commission could say, we can fill a wetland. Not that the Wetlands Commission's gonna wanna do that, because they're trying to protect wetland, but we do have situations where people have gotten permits to fill wet.
Okay.
Okay, so I know we're beating this to death, but in the draft motion, no clearing or other regulated activity will occur within one hundred feet of an inland wetland without first obtaining an inland wetlands permit. So from this inland wetland, if you go down a hundred feet, that seems to protect Mr. La Cava's property, right?
But it's not a setback. So that's
It's not a setback, right, but it's
So so the Wetlands Commission could say, and I'm not saying they would, they could say, okay, we're gonna go up twenty feet. Up to twenty feet, so.
When this lot is sold and the individual owner goes to build something.
So they they could move the house and put a house here and push the the septic here or vice versa.
Right.
But they just have to get a permit. It doesn't, the the house configuration and the septic configuration are not set in stone. But they just would have to go, well, it's commissioned to do that.
Right, but I'm not even talking about that. This draft motion says no clearing will occur within a hundred feet of an inland wetland and without
Until they get a permit.
Yep.
But that's just until
And then a permit, they could decide.
To move it twenty feet away or
They could change it, but.
So it's, right, that's just something kind of saying you need to get a wetland permit to do any activity within the hundred feet and no clearing until they go back to the commission for that individual house.
In other words, the developer of this subdivision can't do the clearing, but an individual property or put, yeah.
Is they get
Well, actually, technically speaking, that is the existing regulation that within the hundred foot buffer, you can't clear, move, grade, do
Right, but you could get a permit to do.
Without it.
It's just reiterating the regulation.
It, yeah, so it's kind of saying, it, yeah.
It's repeating something.
It doesn't have to be stated here, because it's in in effect right now. You can't clear without, in the buffer area.
I think it's just a condition that helps people remember that. All right, that's how I'll put it.
That's how I
So I, I mean, someone could go in and look at the subdivision approval, and I mean, you know, we've had several people who cleared the hundred feet and cleared into the wetland and said, I don't know, so it's just, as many times as we can repeat it, obviously, the applicant knows, but there's other folks who may not understand that, so sometimes we repeat things over and over again. So we could say, it's set it here, it's set it here, it's set it here, this is
Just say like seven times, I think.
And you hope somebody reads it and listens.
Doug has made a a valid point that we should then go on to say that sub- subject to change by review of the, you know, inland wetlands.
Well, that's not what I'm saying. I I see this as it overlaps. Like, if we were to put a conservation easement there on this east side, it would overlap this requirement. And I I guess I see this requirement as
Well, it's not a requirement, it's a requirement to get a permit. So someone could go in that vegetative buffer that's being suggested and clear within it if the Wetlands Commission gave them permission.
Right, it would be controlled by the Wetlands Commission. Right, we'd be basically giving them the, but they have the authority.
But if you conserved it, then they couldn't do the camp.
Well, then they could still come and get a conserve and easement or do something on the conservation easement, so we've reviewed some of those up to the applying. That's just like my thing, and I would clean up, but I know there's a way to get, if you needed to do something in a conservation easement, there was still a way to come, but that would come to planning, not
Right, so you, there's something like you can remove invasive species. There's certain things you can do, but not go in there and
It's that clear.
Get permission to violate the terms of the easement.
Getting rid of the invasive species.
I mean, that was the recommendation from when that was raised, to extend the conservation to include the full one hundred. But even like this, like that might give some protection to Mr. La Cava, but all of his neighbors to the south wouldn't have anything on their, you know, property line there. It was really talking about, you know, the limits of the wetland clearing, you know, the the property owners farther down, like in Austin and Moran, like there is nothing, nothing there permitted levels to stop, you know, to protect a root tree like that exists today.
Anything else?
There was anybody online, Kathy, or anybody wants to speak?
I can't see this. I can't see from here.
There anyone online who would like to speak? Including Kathy? If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand.
Also, I also question why we have to have wetland boundary markers. Are those in perpetuity? And is that, um?
So so Ed, as you're aware, and I think it might have been part of the wetlands permit, it's so that people understand where the wetlands boundary are, and it's a signal. So someone who may not know they shouldn't be in that hundred feet, wouldn't go in there and fill or clear or do whatever. It's a way to kind of deter potential violations and to tell people that.
Sometimes the people go to work on a lot may not know where everything is.
Right.
So that's why you have markers.
So that's why you have markers. It has happened from time to time that. Things are removed because they didn't know about it allegedly.
Well, what what percentage of Old Saybrook is wet inland wetlands? Are we going to? Start putting markers all over the place? I mean, I.
So as a member of the wetlands commission. I mean, you should know that's something that the commission kind of customarily does as well as for conservation.
No, actually, no, actually, it isn't something we've been. Customarily, we've been asking in a few cases if they're willing to, knowing that that. Perhaps is.
But people do that. It's it's nothing new.
Government asks, it's hard to say no, so. I just want to call attention to, I I don't agree with that.
I asked a question, um, was the. Upper D inform if someone wanted to make that change from one hundred feet. Um, clearance from the wetlands to a lesser amount, how how would that be communicated to the people that are? Um, living on, you know, the surrounding area of the development.
I'm I'm sorry, I really don't understand your question.
Going in for an application, so that someone bought, I buy like lot four. And I wanna go closer to the wetland, I have to go to.
Well, if there's a public hearing.
So there'd be a public hearing in the wetland.
There may not be, but if there is one, you would know. Um, it depends on what's proposed. It depends on the lots. Some of these lots are more likely to. Have that than others.
Right, so it would be in the individual homeowner that that. The property would have, but that would be notified.
Homeowner or builder that comes in, yeah.
Or you could subscribe for delivery of agendas on the website, and then you get a, you can just see every time an agenda is posted once a month.
It's very exciting.
You need more email, subscribe.
People do, people do, they subscribe.
But that is one way of going.
That's the best way, really, yeah.
Any other discussion? Then I'd like to move for a motion to approve. Let's propose help me close the hearing, public hearing for the Ture application. Closing paper, aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. Like a motion to approve the Ture application for re-subdivision of land in coastal site plan review? I need to read this thing.
Based upon a motion that was provided?
Based upon the motion that's been provided. I get a second.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Abstain?
I vote for. And so just for the, our clerk. Who's filling in tonight, so it's just.
Doug, Paul, Dennis, myself, and Jay. Oh, yes. Kathy? And Kathy?
Does there need to be a separate motion on the waiver?
So we included in the motion, the commission grants a waiver section.
And I've moved up to two-thirds vote, so. Thank you.
We're trying to figure out this motion. How many people voted?
Kathy? One, two, three. All six, all four.
But we don't.
Five voted.
So all our regular members were here.
Yes, yeah. It all voted.
And one opposed, so it's eighty percent.
Yeah.
But Jay's not seated, isn't.
Eighty percent were the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to do the math.
He's important to do, because it was, you know. Somewhat unactive. And there's nothing for the housing task force?
So I need putting, so pretty much what I've been doing with the housing task force, if it's a housing task force matter. I just, you just kept the agenda, so we'll put housing task force on it. So there's no.
But there's nothing underneath the spot, I think, that.
Right, so usually we'll put something else, rather than change the agenda all the time and worry on out.
It says the survey response going, are we still?
Survey's still going, I don't have the count, um. But I mean, I think we're gonna beat out the last one that we had. When we did the affordable housing survey. Two years ago, and we get a hundred and, I know Sarah gave you the number.
Yeah, last time we met, it was over a hundred.
Was like a hundred and twenty in like two weeks, so I think. You're gonna get a pretty good. Response.
I am, on affordable housing, I was uh reading some economic information with global economics. And and one of the things that they're starting to talk about is. How global economics is driving um lack of affordability. And in that, to such an extent that. Any single location almost can't build enough housing. To counteract the global forces that are causing the rise in um. In lack of affordability. So it's very interesting to see, you know, what we're working to do here on a local basis. But also then, even knowing that the challenges we have locally are then magnified globally. Um, you know, by by real large forces, but. Keep doing the work, yes.
I'll also add, um, I intended to mention this last time, but the level spreader did get installed by the town. Uh, DPW at Chucker Beach. What that does is it drains, when the marsh overflows, it drains about a foot. Or thirteen, fourteen inches. Of uh water, it lets it flow right into the sound.
What is it?
It's a, over at Chucker Beach Marsh, there's a tide gate there. And over time, the uh, an embankment had built up from storms. So they cut a, it's called a level spreader, it's kind of like a swale. They cut it through the bank, chopped it down about a foot, uh, thirteen inches or so. When that thirteen inches was there, it would actually hold enough water back to overflow into the roads. So the roads would be flooded. Now it just runs straight into the sun. So it's like an interim. Uh, solution until this.
It's working.
Don't know yet.
Okay, well, I was curious, uh, yeah, maybe we'll find out tonight, I do.
Yeah, but it's, uh, it it was a, a fairly hefty hefty uh effort with, you know, the town and the deep and. Uh, the town engineer and Chris and uh Chucker Beach Association, it was. So it was a good, good project.
So the tide gate still has to go over, fill a valve kind of thing, but. But the tide gate's still in place, it's just.
Oh, yeah, tide gate's still in place, that will allow the marsh to drain even further. But when you get into like emergency conditions where the roads are flooded, you know, it's unacceptable, so.
Top of your top, but it gets too high.
And there's a study now to, you know, for a more permanent solution with the tide gate.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's more of a temporary, upper temporary solution until we can really evaluate the marshes and the tide wave through that. Yes. But the, they're not. Yeah, we, and we did get deep approval and so forth, um, but the overall tide gate evaluation in the marsh, we get a grant. Um, and funds from the town and our partner Westbrook and Chapman Beach, so that's a half a million dollar study we have going on. Just of the Chapman Chucker. Um, Indian town from that whole stretch of the systems and the marshes and so forth, so we really can't do anything. To address the tide gate concerns because we don't have the data. Uh, that Steve would want. We did have this report where we had Home Depot, many, many years, it was oh, twenty years ago, but Sandy changed the. The coast, so all that data that we did have at the time. Um. Is no longer.
It's not the same.
Yes.
All right.
Um, I I mean, we're kind of jumping around, um, I don't know if there's other reports, or you want me to do a quick staff report?
That would be good.
Okay, so, um, just to keep you up on that, the apartment, a housing grant, that was the eighty-six thousand. We were awarded, um, Megan, who, Megan Jewfords, SPD. With her River Dog hat and I, they're gonna help with our public outreach at some point when we move further along, so Megan and I. And uh, the first selectmen, we met. With Ben Lovejoy from DOH, and during the discussion, we. Started talking a little bit, or. I did about maybe we need to expand.
This is the Main Street.
The main B one study, maybe to include, I call it kind of the triangle. Um, for the B two zone, which isn't in the B one, so. Uh, I, two more proposals. From our consultants, and we've asked if the number is another eighteen thousand, if they would incorporate that into it. Um, which is gonna be reviewed. Um, either way, we're looking to have a September fifteenth. If we can get the money in place, that's gonna be the start, um, the contracts and everything with the consultants that we talked about WSP, those are the folks who did thrive. There was a lot of overlap. And Jacobson, and they do have some data, so. Internally. Um, maybe I could get some help because, uh, we're gonna need to start pulling some maps. For what we have for parking and septic data, so we'll start pulling that out of our master files, getting that to. The consultant, so hopefully we'll be off and running, um, we already touched on the survey that has been October first. Deadline on that. Uh, we also talked about our housing plan. Uh, which would have our affordable housing plan component. Um, to meet our statutory requirement to upgrade. It's hard to believe it's five years next year, um. So. John Guskowski and I, we met just to talk about it a little bit. We're a little bit concerned. About how fast we move on this because we suspect there may be some housing. Bills or changes that may happen, and we wanna go through and. Take a look at everything, so we're gonna keep it, we kind of said the September second being in September for our ten-minute kickoff. Um, and. One thing is the commission can do, we don't have any business for our next meeting, um, but maybe. We could cancel, and if you can start taking a look. At the affordable housing plan as we convert it more into the housing plan to beach the affordable housing plan requirements. You know, if there's just thoughts and ideas or things for revisions. I mean, it's only five years old, I feel like we just finished and we're starting again, um, so hopefully we're not gonna have to. Reinvent the wheel on that. Um, what else? I think that's about it, unless you have questions.
Yeah, I anticipate. Legislation passing in September. What's gonna say? I have no idea.
I mean, either way.
I'm sorry, you do or don't?
I do.
State, state law.
Yeah, and that could, some of the things they're doing are. Extraordinary, so. And some of it didn't make sense, so I'm glad the bill was vetoed. Some of the things weren't defined, there'd be no way for Chris to actually do them because it's like, did we do it or not, you know? So they've gotta have it make sense. Um, I think they also have to recognize that not every town is completely sewn in water. And that is, it's like a. Talking to a wall, it's as if they don't know that, um. And that's the same in Old Saybrook, you know, I mean. That's the reality. You have to somehow take that into consideration. Or, you know, your statutes start to not make sense.
So that's another reason for the delay, but for the most part, I mean, the the affordable housing plan, which does have some general housing things for our housing plan. And start taking a look at it, revisit it, you know, start thinking about things we can improve. Um, John and I talked about a lot of the actions and we started it, you know, we really didn't know how it was gonna work, so it was sort of a housing task force among staff. Obviously, this commission is now the housing task force, it makes more sense. Um, we can do it that way, we've tweaked some of the things, but if you look at the action items, we've touched on a lot of them, or, you know. Our partnership now with CMDA, things like that. It it's just, I think for the first round, we didn't really know where we were going, so. I think we've done a lot of the things and grew forward towards doing it, it's just. It may have been done a little bit differently. Or by a different party than the. The actual action plan suggested, so, um, we do not have any business for the next meeting. Um, so unless you want me to drum up business, we could all go home and read the housing plan for the first week of September. And revisit it for the second meeting in September.
Quick question, Chris, um, do we need to do required training credits this year?
I will keep sending things, um. I gotta revisit it. You should continue to do the training because I think it's every two years, you have to have it.
I think year two.
Yep, so I I.
So this is year two, so if we will get the. Points last year, we're good. I mean, I I I have no problem with going, I just don't wanna get to December and find out. I gotta get twelve.
Well, I think last December. So you should start taking your training now, you've got two years to do that. Remember how that was, two years?
Well, I don't think, it it, I I think if you can't take it this year to cover next, the the next two-year period, I think.
You have, you have two years, but my advice is if you see something, because some of the training, maybe it's affordable housing, it may not come up again, or you may miss it. Just try to take advantage as much of it and get the credits behind you. You know, and this will all change too, so when we have the election and we have new members, they go on a different timeline, I think we're all just kind of thinking. Let's just get everybody on the two-year timeline, you're gonna do the training one way or the other. I mean, I think this group has been pretty good about. You know, attending, there's been a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah, that Maryland, you connected us early on to Maryland and some of the programs they do, and they're constantly sending out, you know. I probably see something from them every other month that's good and applicable, and it's easy to attend.
UConn's starting a series like in September, I. Find out if it's like once a week for an hour, they're kind of covering all the the topics, so if you can sign up for that, I wanna go to them, they would cover all the requirements too.
And I should probably talk to them, so the chairman of the parties are gonna be responsible for kind of taking in all. The credits from everybody at the next round, but. Maybe I'll just ask them to just send a reminder, don't forget, you still have, you're gonna have to do it all over again. So.
Well, I was happy to see that they had a site plan, reading site plans training session, but it was in the middle of vacation.
You know, and that's something, that's something to.
It's a good training session.
I know, I'm I'm sorry.
To do it maybe in person, it may not be to do a little bit of that, I just don't know how old you're all in the. We can maybe do something just for our members, we can have our. But the site plan is gonna be wonderful.
That all interpane a motion to this twist? If you have a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Any opposed? Kathy, you abstain?
No, I said I.